Good evening, everyone. Thank you for tuning in on YouTube. For this, the third in our series of the Erie County Democratic Party Candidates Forums. On Tuesday, you heard from the candidates for County Executive and Erie County Council. Last night, Wednesday, you heard from candidates for Erie Mayor and Erie City Council. And tonight, we're looking forward to a great conversation with our candidates for Erie School Board. We'll begin in just a moment. I'd like to start out by introducing our panelists, the folks who will be bringing the questions to the candidates tonight. We have with us Ms. Selena King, who is the Chairwoman of our Erie County Democratic Party Black Caucus. We have TJ Sandell, who is the President of the Great Lakes Building Trades and Business Agent for Plumbers Local 27, representing organized labor here tonight. We have Shannon Keen, who is a representative of the Erie County Young Dems. And representing the LGBTQIA+ Caucus this evening is Kristi Ganebus. I want to start by thanking all of our panelists for taking the time and preparing the questions for tonight's forum. And again, to thank our candidates for taking some time out of a busy campaign schedule to be with us tonight and to help share their insights and their perspectives and vision for the future of the Erie School District with Erie voters. Without further ado, I'd like to begin by, I'd like to begin by giving our candidates each 30 seconds for a brief introduction and to tell the viewers why they are running for Erie City School Board. Because of the number of candidates we have tonight, we're going to go through the order of candidates in alphabetical order and we will follow that same order as we go through our questions as well. So we'll begin tonight with Jay Brenneman.
Seems it's always happened to me in school and in the Army that I ended up going first. But hello, everybody. Thank you, panelists. Thank you, everybody. My name is Jay Brenneman. I am a full-time doctoral student studying social work specifically in housing inequality in Erie. I am on the Social Work Faculty at Edinburgh University. I also teach Political Science and Policy at Gannon and Policy at Case Western in Cleveland. I also run the Toolining Library here in Erie. I live in, I live in the city with my wife, Jamie, and our three kids, Elijah, Paige, and Milo. And Paige and Eli are, are, are students at Jefferson Elementary. And the reason why I'm running is for them and for every child in the future of our city.
Thank you. Daria Devlin, you're up next.
Thanks so much, all of you. Thanks for hosting tonight. I'm Daria Devlin. I, right now, am the Director of a new nonprofit in town, the Erie Center for Arts and Technology. You might have seen on the news recently, we purchased the old Wayne School at Sixth and East Avenue and renovating that. I live in the city with my husband Neil and my three boys, all teenagers, which is fun. I had to go to an alternate location this evening because it's so noisy at my house. My boys all attended Jefferson Wilson Middle School. I have two at Collegiate and one will be there next year. I'm running because in my former life, I worked for the Erie School District as Director of Communications and Marketing and Public Relations. I think I have a lot to offer and nothing has ever been more important to me than our public schools. I think that they're the key to a strong city. They're the key to an equitable future for our country. And so I want to put my experience to work for the schools in this role.
Thank you. Lauren Gillespie.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Lauren Gillespie and I'm running to support students, parents, teachers, and staff here at our Erie City Schools. My background is in early childhood education. I also have a dual background in finances that I find uniquely qualified me for Erie City School Boards. I have two young daughters who will be attending Erie City Schools in the future and I'm looking forward to supporting them as well as all students here in the city.
Thank you. Aaron Lundberg.
Thank you. My name is Aaron Lundberg. I reside in the city with my wife Kelly and four kids. They attend Jefferson Wilson Middle School and Collegiate. And I am excited about the potential of being on the school board because I've been super passionate about the city of Erie. I believe we have a gem of the city. And in my work on PTO boards and parent advisory panels and the superintendent's advisory panels, the one thing that I've learned and I firmly believe is that if the direction that our city schools go is going to be huge and the most impactful thing that is going to help propel the city to continue to move forward to where it needs to go and to be a spotlight of this region that actually is. And I believe in the schools. I believe in the teachers. And I've had some great experiences with everyone who's been involved with the district. And I feel that as, in my public role as a Executive Director of a local nonprofit, large multi-site church with a nonprofit connected to it and a Leadership Institute, I have the ability to bring a lot of that leadership and management and understanding of finances and how to empower people and communicate well with others and across silos to be, to team that works together.
Thank you. Zachariah Sharif.
Hello, everyone. Thank, thank you for having me today. My name is Zachariah Sharif. I was born in Somalia, but lived here in Erie for almost 24 years. So, and currently employed at the Erie County Department of Health. I'm running for Erie City School Board because I'm a parent of four. I currently have two kids who attend Lincoln Elementary School and, and my, my wife and I are actively involved in our kids' education. And just from, well, the things that happened over the last year with the pandemic, I think having a public health official would definitely bring a different aspect to the board here, at the school board and, and just also being a graduate at the City School myself and all my brothers and sisters. So I can definitely bring the aspect to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Depen Tamba.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry for the camera. My camera is not working for some reason. But my name is Depen Tamba, originally from West Africa. I was born in Sierra Leone, grew up in Guinea. I've been in Erie ever since I came to the US, so about 17 years. I'm a parent of two. I have two boys, eight-year-old and a two-year-old. I actually grew up in the school system, graduated from Edinburgh University with a degree in Business Administration. And the reason for running for school board is although I haven't been passionate about being in politics, as a new American, I believe it's important to have representation in our schools, in our school system to help our new Americans, you know, navigate through the system and actually come out successful. So it's very passionate to me to, you know, just by working with our students and seeing, you know, there hasn't been any change. And I feel like I need, you know, there needs to be a voice. So that's the reason why I'm strongly, you know, I'm passionate about running for school board. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final candidate with us this evening is Leatret Tate.
Hi, everyone. I'm Leatret Tate. I am born and raised in Erie, graduated collegiate academy, graduated Edinburgh University. I studied applied developmental psychology there. Moved to Pittsburgh after that, studied clinical community psychology, and then just recently completed my doctorate in community engagement. Why I'm running for school board is really a direct product of all of those experiences. I made a commitment to myself and my family when I went to Pittsburgh that I'd come back and I really wanted to focus on youth development here in the city. I saw and lived the experience of not having a ton of opportunities as a young person. But I was able to make away from myself through education. And education has really been a major vehicle for me in getting to where I'm at now. And so when I moved back, I started a small business where I provide dissertation coaching and consulting for other young black doctoral students. And so that's been my contribution and education has continued to play a pivotal role in me and my experience professionally and personally. So I'm really excited about the opportunity for what I can contribute on school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like we have a wonderful slate of candidates here. And I look forward to hearing your responses tonight and getting to know you all better throughout, throughout the campaign. Our first question tonight will be on behalf of our LGBTQIA+ Caucus from Kristi Ganebus. Kristi, floor is yours.
All right. So the question is, to what extent have you participated in LGBTQIA+ plus cultural competency training? What types of training would you recommend to the board, the faculty, and staff?
Jay Brenneman, you have 90 seconds.
So I've not, I couldn't tell you how many trainings I've been involved in, not as, not just as a participant, but as a trainer, as a trainer as well. It's been a few years. I co-facilitated some training for the Erie VA. And I've also co-authored an international book on LGBT equality. Just, it was just published a couple of years ago. I actually got a student of mine to, to read it the other day. They were very interested in the subject. I, I think that the one thing we need to look at is, is not just a series of trainings to acclimate leaders and faculties and teachers and staff to the wonderful experience and breadth of life, right? I think that we need to take a look at the pedagogy. We need to take a look at the, at the curriculum. And we need the, the broader LGBTQIA community to assess, not only is our policies working, but really assess, you know, the distance between what we're saying we're doing and what the outcomes are. What are those lived experiences of the students? So I think we have to go beyond just diversity training and actually measure and keep track of, of how things are going.
Thank you. Daria Devlin.
Thanks. That was a really great question, Kristi. Thank you so much. So in my time at the district, right at kind of the time I was, I was ending, there was really starting to be a focus on making sure that we have these cultural competencies across the board, right? For in this area, certainly with regard to diversity and inclusiveness across the entire district. So I was fortunate to participate in some of those early trainings. All the staff was getting some of those and I was, I was, you know, involved in that in the early end. I will be honest with you that since then, I haven't done a whole lot. I'm very interested in doing more. And I think really from the sense of professional development, we always need to give, I think, our teachers and staff a say in what professional development looks like. And I think that if we talk to most of them, we would hear from them, this is something they want. This is something they know we need. We want to make all our students comfortable. We know that students learn better when they're leaving that baggage at the door and they're able to come in and know they're supported. So I'm definitely in favor of expanding that, you know, those types of trainings. I would definitely, I would hope as a board member, you know, would participate in that myself. But really, like I said, want to make sure teachers and students have a say in it. So we know when we're doing it, we're doing what's really needed and what's really everyone's going to be open to.
Thank you. Lauren Gillespie, 90 seconds.
Thank you, Jim. I currently have not participated in any LGBTQIA trainings. However, I would be more than interested in researching some and my time on the board and having some consultants come in and speak with teachers and staff as well as other administrators. It's definitely something that is, I'm very passionate about and I would certainly like to research and learn more. I really like listening to community members. I want to hear that lived life experience. I would really like to hear what our students would have to say. I know that there is a current board for students. I would be really willing to listen to what the students feel would most benefit them.
Thank you, Lauren. Aaron Lundberg.
Thanks for that question. In full transparency, I have not had any formal training in that. But I do operate in the values of everyone has an equal voice and needs to be fully heard. And I think that I, I feel that I have a demonstration in my past of a posture of listening and bringing in the right people to talk about the right things for things that I don't understand. And so that would be an area of improvement and opportunity to learn that, have those types of trainings as some have mentioned, but to bring in people who can properly educate and train and help, help me learn and others on the board learn how that might impact other students or families in our district.
Thank you. Zachariah Sharif, 90 seconds.
I haven't had a training yet, but post-COVID, I know at the Health Department, definitely I advocate equal for everybody. And now we were just getting started to do a conference here in Erie for LGBTQ and it got halted back because of COVID. But I've been a lot of, on a lot of Zoom training, talked about. And we noticed a lot of the disadvantages and this fortunately that's impacting the LGBT community. And so one of the things that we did was trying to reach out and whatever it is, like tobacco treatment or whatnot. So I've learned a lot and I was looking forward to the conference and engage in our community more. And, and that's one of the reasons, especially being on a school board, no kids should worry about what, you know, their preference or whatnot. And that should be, right at the door should be stopped. So I'm looking forward, once elected, to bring this to the board and make sure everyone has a fair treatment. And of course, in educating our teachers, whatever it is, to bring somebody to speak to students and just have an awareness in our community.
Thank you, Zach. Depen Tamba.
Um, yes, that was actually an awesome question. But to be honest, I haven't had any training. But I would be more than likely, you know, open-minded to being trained in that, you know, area. And I'm just, as an individual who have struggled just being accepted, you know, in the community, just because I'm from, you know, another country, I completely understand how it feels like, you know, to fight for acceptance. So I really do believe it's, it's an awesome opportunity for, you know, all of us to take the time and actually get the training, but not also, but not only the training, but also like, you know, implement in our school system. Because I have seen, you know, just being in the school system, seeing bullies and, you know, ju-just the way other students are being treated that doesn't fit in. So I think it would be great for now with the teacher, but you know, also take it down to the students and, you know, have these training for everyone so we can understand each other better.
Thank you, Depen. Leatret Tate.
Thank you. It's actually pronounced Leatret.
Leatret, thank you. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you. So I've actually participated in a number of trainings specific to the LGBTQIA+ community. I previously worked for a nonprofit in Pittsburgh that focused on public health and a lot of the training and a lot of, we were leading and facilitating trainings in the community. We were in HIV and STI clinic. So we did a lot of focus training in that. And I actually managed our program for about two and a half years that targeted African-American young women in the community. So I was working with young people ages 11 to 18 to host these trainings and, you know, conversations around gender, gender identity, sexual orientation were really a prime focus on that. I've also, in the higher education world, I was formerly a psychology professor. And so we had a number of trainings in that context as well. So I'm intimately familiar with Title IX. That was a major focus from a policy lens in my research for my dissertation. And so, you know, thinking about how that translates to recommendations for teachers and practices and how we can support students, I think I've had some experiences that touch on a number of those. And I think the, the district has done a good job framing Title IX for our district and for our students here. But I think we can do better at just naming it, you know, leading with our values and being more explicit in terms of what we're, what we're trying to communicate, which is acceptance and trying to show that we are supportive from a policy and a practice sense.
Thank you. That concludes our, our first round here this evening. And with our second question from Organized Labor is TJ Sandell.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Jim, thanks for having me, of course. My question, my first question is, as a candidate, how important is it to you that we work to create good union jobs that pay a living wage with benefits and produce a skilled diversified local workforce? How do you see yourself being instrumental in promoting this? Thank you.
The first response, we'll go back to Jay Brenneman.
Thanks. And just for equity's sake, maybe we could do reverse alphabetical order or something. So I'm not always going first.
We'll flip them for the second two questions. How about that?
Okay. And you can count this towards my time. So I am a union member. Again, I am a member of ABSKIF. And I do believe that we need to have strong unions. I think we need to reinforce that. You know, how do we, how do we teach our, how do we teach the, our, our children? How do we teach the next generation of students that the work has value? The work has meaning that if we don't, you know, that the future has importance and worth? If we don't prioritize organized labor, if we don't prioritize, you know, that's the democratization of work, right? That's the, the role of, of people in their workplace and people in the community. So I think we need to have a strong relationship with our unions. We, I think we need to strengthen the role and our support, both in contractual work as well as what's happening within the school buildings. But also, as we've seen during the pandemic, all the aspects of our community life that our school touches.
Thank you. Daria Devlin.
Thanks so much for the question, TJ. So first of all, you know, I didn't mention before, I'm a graduate of Central High in the days that it was Central High. So when I was there, I was an academic student, but knew many of the students, of course, who were in our shop programs and watched kind of the things that they learned. And I'll be honest, I think in many ways, the pendulum swung so far for so long, believing that every kid needed to go to college, that I think we really lost sight of how important many of those trades were. In my work right now, in my own organization, we are all about training folks for living wage jobs. I mean, you can't really change a life without providing an opportunity for a living wage and a family sustaining wage jobs. And many of those are in unions. So I would say as we, you know, as a board member, as we move forward with policy, I think we really need to make sure that all of our students are prepared for life after high school. And that might be college and the military for some, but for many, it's going to go directly to work. We need to strengthen those relationships with the unions, with the apprenticeship programs that are out there that I think in many ways have been really underutilized. Make sure kids from a young age, from sixth and seventh grade, know about those jobs so that they can start planning for their futures. That's the way we make our city stronger, we make our schools stronger, and we make sure our kids are successful when they graduate.
Thank you. Lauren Gillespie, 90 seconds.
This is a subject that is near and dear to my heart. My family actually owns and operates a plumbing company here in Erie and have four generations. My father was an Erie City plumber for 20 years before he passed. Unions are something that have always been a part of my background. I feel strongly that we need to support our unions as well as students who are interested in the trades of going into different unions. I have some research that I have looked into in regards to helping support people in our community with small businesses, based on my family background, as well as I was a member of a union myself for a limited time. I think it is something that we need to support in Erie. I think it is something that children need to be made aware of, different trades that going into a trade school or learning a trade might be more beneficial for some than going into college. I know my own children have talked about not wanting to go into college and go into debt. So I do think it's something that we need to bring forth to our students as well as families.
Thank you. Aaron Lundberg.
Yes, I've, I've not had the opportunity to be a part of a union, but I do have the opportunity to employ and work with a lot of people that I help lead. And so it's very important for me to help take, take the best care possible of them that I can, provide good benefits, be wise. And in regards to unions, I think that trades and then the people that make up unions, they're, they're critical to our country, the makeup of what we do. And I think that it's important to, as people said, to fight for living wages and that there, these people are doing a quality job. I'm not good at most of those jobs. And so I see all these people who are skilled in incredible things. And we need to make sure we're taking care of those as well as producing those individuals for the future. And one of the opportunities that I see great in our school district is how we can do a better job of continuing to partner our students with those type of programs to not just service out in the community, but our own schools. And that's an exciting opportunity before me that I think we can really start to take advantage of.
Thank you. Zachariah Sharif.
So I'm, I'm currently a union member, but I think a lot of times people don't understand what, what the union workers are for. And, and I definitely agree now, especially with, we noticed with this pandemic. And, and one of the reasons, I think, especially with the schools and like was mentioned already, not every kid wants to go to college. And it's very important to get, to develop our kids that, you know, if they can have that one, one or two-year training skills, you know, within the high schools, SUNY, Erie High currently, but just to connect them, because a lot of the time we see kids can't find jobs here or the jobs are not paying the benefits. And not just the kids, but a real grown-up did not find a job to even, they have to work two, three jobs because this job is not offering a benefit. So I think a lot of people are miseducated about the union. So I'm definitely for livable wage. As we know, like Erie is like already categorized as one of the poorest cities in, in the state. So I definitely advocate for, for everything the union is doing.
Thank you. Depen Tamba.
Um, yes, I, I 100% agree with it. My only problem is, I believe there needs to be a bridge between our, our students and the union. Because even though I've never worked for the union and I actually did not know what it was until recent years. And, you know, having to understand like what they stand for, you know, and how they support their employees. But it's like, there needs to be a way where it's there to reach other communities. Because like my community, like we have a lot, I actually help students with job application in college, you know. And just the fact that to get them in jobs like that is very difficult. So it's not like, you know, we don't have the people. I think it's that connection. So if we can have like, you know, the bridge to where we can connect the union with our students, I think that would be awesome because it is a great opportunity for them. So it, it's just that open mindset and, you know, working together for the better future.
Thank you. Leatret Tate.
Yeah, I think that's a great question about how important is building good relationships between the, with the union. I think it's, it's incredibly important, whether a student is someone who will or will not go to college, there's a likelihood that they will be, you know, have an opportunity to work for a union job. I was a part of a union when I was teaching down in Pittsburgh. And so I was part of the union at my part-time faculty role as well as my full-time faculty role. And I'm actually currently actively working in solidarity with that union group because they've, you know, they're in conversations about wrongful terminations of faculty. So when it comes to, you know, the, the support and good relationships with unions, it's incredibly important for our teachers, our students to see, as well as be exposed to early on so that they understand.
as well as be exposed to early on so that they understand the value of affiliating with their local unions and whatever career path they'll be going down. So yeah, I, I think that's, I think that answers your question. I think there was a second question, but I forgot what the second one was.
We had a couple of seconds left on that response, TJ. If you had a, a second part to it that she didn't address.
All right. The second part of the question is, how do you see yourself being instrumental in that?
So I'll try to answer this briefly, but I, I think that there's so many opportunities for the school board to be instrumental and pivotal in establishing and maintaining good relationships with our, our unions. Like I said, there's the teachers' union, but there's also unions that we, you know, can, that we bring on in terms of our contractors. So it's really important to maintain positive relationships with those folks and for them to see the school directors as on their side and how they're making those decisions.
Thank you. And Leitrin, hang, hang with us right there because we'll be back to you for the first response on the next question at, at Jay Brenneman's urging to, to flip the script here. Our next question comes from the Erie County Young Democrats and Shannon Keane. Shannon, the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me here today. Our first question is, what changes would you like to make to the school board budget? And what would you want to prioritize?
Right. Leitrin?
That really doesn't give me time to write down the question. Thanks, Jay. So what changes would I like to see with the budget? I think for me, primarily it comes down to hiring decisions. The way I like to think about it is, I think we've had a school board that's been very business oriented and has really done a great job at that. And I think it's been in response to the issues that we've seen with the bud, budget. But I'd really like to be more human and people focused. So I'd really like to see some of that budget go towards hiring, showing diversity and representation in terms of our hiring for educators, hiring and prioritizing mental health. So bringing in counselors that are representative of our students and representative of our community at large. And I'd really like to see that budget, like I said, going towards more of those human things. So, you know, creating more opportunities within the schools for families to see themselves as, as part of that, that school process. And I think there's some really creative ways that our budget can be utilized to support those efforts. And so that's what I'd like to see, and that's also what I'd like to prioritize.
Thank you. Depen Tamba, 90 seconds.
Yes, I actually like it to be spent on our students. It's just like, because I want to see more programs for our students. You know, useful stuff, something that they can actually use once they graduate, once they leave high school. You know, it's not only for high school. And I also like to see inclusions, because a lot of time you hear about different, you know, programs that go on in school, but it doesn't pertain to every student. It's only like, you know, that single, like, you know, it's, it's that group. And then you have other students missing out on another important life, you know, lesson and stuff that they can actually use when they graduate. So you have these few amount of students who have like, you know, that opportunity to get this experience and, you know, the others are left out. So I want to see inclusion, to see more programs and more organizations that are, you know, included in the, in the school. And like, you know, working with our students and helping them navigate the world once they graduate high school, because a lot of time you have students graduating high school and not knowing what they want to do afterwards, you know. Like, you know, there will be a few that want to go to college, but that's it. And then you have this, you know, large amount of group who is just like, well, we graduate, that's it, you know? And or, you know, it's like factories, like we want to see more, like, you know, we talk about the union, like, let's have someone like, you know, come in and talk to different students, you know, just inclusion. I want to say inclusion in our school for every student.
Thank you. Zachariah Sharif?
So, so to me, one, one thing that I want to see in the budget changes is to have more of behavioral health faculty members, social workers in our schools. And let's look at that, having all this policing in our school system when it's, when it's not really needed. That budget can be used for something else. And especially with this pandemic, and I've just looked at, talked to current superintendent and just tell me how big our school is, like, we have all these, nothing against police. My brother's a police officer, but, you know, we have like almost 17 officers in the schools when that money can be used. And we have, they have no social workers that connects with the students, connects with the families. So these, these are kind of things that I want to see changes in the schools. And of course, diverse inclusion and I'm, we're heading in the right direction, but these things are, are keen to me.
Thank you, Zach. Aaron Lundberg?
Well, first of all, Shannon, love that you're involved in the community at such a young age. I think this is exactly why we're all running for school boards. We want to see that more and more in students. I think that the district has had a great, we've, we're coming at a great moment here where we can take advantage of a lot of things. One, previous, previous leadership has done a really good job of getting us to a place where our funding is getting to a more accurate place. And we also have an influx of money due to COVID coming in that we can be very wise about how we steward that. And so first and foremost, I think we need to bring that into what that means for the mental and social wellbeing of our students. That's with trainings, with mental health professionals, with all that means for the right teachers and administrators and, and people that can help come alongside our students. And we, let's face it, we have a district with the majority of unique situations that we face that most districts don't necessarily face around us. And we need to be able to handle that, manage that, and steward that well with all of our students so that they're achieving graduation at the same rate for what it needs to be. Second, I think we need to elevate the standards of our buildings and our programs. And so that means being wise with the number of extracurricular programs we do, including the certain sports and whatnot. And so whatever we choose, the extracurricular programs we have, be wise about the quantity so that the quality can be well. And the ones that we have, really use them to enhance the education of a child and a student in our, in our district and have it be quality. I know my son, for example, he's on the track team and he run and he runs and practices on dirt and a, and a grass field that's not mowed well. And that's just not excellence for our kids. We need to focus our budget on our kids and the purpose of what we're doing with them. And that also goes for our buildings. We need our kids and our students walking into our buildings going, this is an excellent place to be. This is an excellent learning environment. I'm going to do well here and I'm going to thrive here. Employees for Erie Insurance walk into that building and they go, I'm going to do a good job here today. I'm going to work hard. And we want our standards for our buildings and what we provide for our students to match the high expectations that we have for our students when we want them to tuck their uniform shirt in or show up to time on class. And so we need to put our funding towards that to provide the best possible environment for our students.
Thank you, Aaron. And I just want to address, there's, there's a little glitch between Zoom and YouTube. So for a portion of time, I think our audience could hear everybody just fine, but they were only seeing my face. Nobody wants that less than me. And so I, I'll do my best to make sure that, that we're, we're piping the right, the right feeds through here. But for some reason, there's a little hang up. Lauren Gillespie, 90 seconds to you.
Shannon, thank you so much for your question. One of the things through my conversations with our community members, as well as some of the teachers that are currently teaching, is they've brought up to me the quality of our buildings. The quality of our buildings could certainly be improved. The air conditioning system was something that was brought to my attention. Students are sometimes being in 90-degree heat weather during the summer months. That's just, that's not acceptable for our students. They don't deserve that. I, if I'm elected to the board, I want to make sure that it's comfortable for every student, that our air conditioning systems are working properly, that our equipment is working properly. It was brought to my attention that some of the equipment used in the gym is very old and outdated. I would like to see the equipment that the students are allowed to use be more current, be more available. Some of the buildings themselves need updated, painted, renovated. Diversity is another subject that is big on my list. I want to see more diverse teachers and staff. I want teachers and staff that these students can relate to, that they can talk to. I know some of the other members of my slate have brought up getting the police out of the schools. That is something that I also believe in. I would like to see more mental health focused in our schools, someone that the students can talk to, someone that they can knock on a door and say, you know, I'm having a tough day. I would really like to come in and talk to you. These are things that are high priorities for me.
Thank you. Daria Devlin?
Shannon, I love your question, and I love it because as one of the people that was really involved in the fight for, for fair funding, you know, since our budget crisis in, it really peaked in 2015, it's really nice to be in a situation to say, what can we do with the money we have? Instead of what do we need to cut? So for me, I'm tired, I'm tired of my kids not having what kids in the county have. I'm tired of not being kind of the, the point of excellence, to use Aaron's word, but the spotlight. We should have the best. We have the biggest school district in our county. We should have the best things for our kids, at least on par with what they have in the county. And, and it's time to do that. We need to improve our busing and expand our busing. I'm tired of hearing that we have to put kids on EMTA buses. I know we had to for funding, but yellow busing, door-to-door busing, those kinds of things our kids deserve. They need more technology. So all of my other peer candidates here today, I've talked about other things, but technology is another big one we really need to focus on. We need resources, we need more, you know, our, our buildings need to be improved certainly, and, and social workers. So yes, we have, you know, some behavioral specialists, but social workers, absolutely. I don't think we have one. If we do, you know, I'm sure he or she is very overworked. We need more of those, more supports for our kids. It's time for other districts to look to us to see how they should function and what our kids have. And we should be the place where the excellence is found. And let's use this moment, which maybe we'll never get again, to do that.
Thank you. And Jay Brenneman, you have the final response.
You know, and, and situations like this, we, you think of, think about, think about how we talk about or how we demand things from impoverished communities and, and people who are experiencing job loss or experiencing challenges and difficulties. We say, you know, you got to do more with less, you know, you got to pull yourself up by the bootstraps. Maybe you just got to work harder. And you, you're forever spending time to make up for all the deficits and deficiencies from the past, those that aren't yours by any nature, any means, or any failure of your own. It's because of policies, because of decisions that have been made at every level of government, be it school board, city, county, the state and Washington DC. And, you know, for me, it isn't so much like, okay, what are we, what are we going to do with this pot of mine that's coming in? Because, you know, that's not going to fix all these problems that have existed, that, that will continue to exist. You know, we've, our, our children, the children of this community have been robbed. Generations of children have been robbed of a future, have been robbed of, of a just future that is deservingly theirs. And we have to do more than just, you know, focus on, you know, figure out how we're going to spend a few pennies that we have, which even the money we're getting now isn't going to be enough. You know, social workers, other things like that, they're just fixing, they're just trying to, you know, Band-Aid problems that exist. We need to focus on, you know, the neighborhoods, the communities where our students live, you know, where the, where the teachers are. We need to work with the city and the county to overcome the, the tax challenges. And not just that, but also to make sure that those communities are places where families can live and thrive. Because if they can't thrive in the community, they're not going to thrive in school, no matter how nice the buildings are or anything like that.
Thank you. And our final question for tonight's forum comes from Selena King on behalf of the Erie County Democratic Party Black Caucus. Selena?
Thank you, Chairman Wertz, and thank you all candidates for being here tonight. It's great to see some familiar faces as well as some new faces in the game. The question that I am asking deals with equity in the district. What is your definition of equity? And what are some measurable outcomes that you will work on or implement if elected?
The first response goes back to Leitrin Tate.
So my definition for equity, thank you, Selena, this is a great, this is a great question. When I think of equity, I think of, you know, an organizing slogan always pops into my mind when I think about equity, nothing about us without us. And so that, again, to me, means bringing in people, having people in these decision-making positions who understand the lived experiences of the folks in which we're trying to support. They understand the experiences of the young people in our city. They under, they've lived it themselves, or they've spent a good amount of time here in the city. They spend a good amount of time here interacting with those young people, talking to them, talking with our families and hearing directly what their struggles are. So equity, to me, a big part of that is these people being at the table and not necessarily just, you know, being spoken to and, you know, being researched and, you know, having these conversations where, you know, their thoughts are being, you know, shared, but nothing's actually tangibly happening to make change. So equity to me is having people at the table, having people in decision-making powers, and then change coming as a result of that. And so I think that the second question is, what, what would I like to see? What measurable outcomes? So I'd like to see an annual equity report from being sent out from the district to show what we're prioritizing and what we are doing about it. A big part of my platform and what I really value as a person, but also as a candidate, is transparency and accountability. We can't just say, you know, as we're out here campaigning, we can't just say this is what we want to see without actually backing it up once we're elected and, and making that change. So I'd love to see a, a full equity report that details what we're doing, what changes we're making. And this kind of goes back to the previous question around budget. Holds us accountable to making sure that that budget is working in response to what our community's needs are from an immediate standpoint, but also these are changes that are going to be sustainable. And like I said before, I think it's really about investing in people and using these dollars to show that we're ready to make these decisions that are in our, in the best interest of our students, our families, and our communities at large.
Thank you. And the next response goes to Depen Tamba.
Hey, I 100% agree with what Leitrin was saying. So equity, equality for all, right? But how can you say equality for all if you're not understanding the people you're serving? So I think for us to have equality for us, like, you know, having representation, having someone who understands our students, our community, their parents, you know, what they're going through and what they have to like, you know, how they have to navigate the school system to come out to be the person that, you know, they're looking to become. So if we're going to say we want equality for all, we have to like, you know, actually do something about it. You know, we have to change the way we've been running the school system and expecting, you know, a different outcome. You can't keep doing the same thing and expect a different outcome. So I think we actually have to like, you know, start making these changes. And like I stated before, the reason for me running is because I want to see that change. I want to see a representation of our community, like, you know, the new American community of like, you know, our community just being a part of the school system to say, hey, you know what? We want to, we want to see the change also. So I'm definitely, you know, showing that result and saying like, okay, they have, there, there are changes. We are seeing changes in the school system. So it, it's just having that, you know, aspect of it in there, you know, having people in there to actually bring to life what we're going through in our, in the community and, you know, helping our student navigate through the school system. So equity is just like, you know, we need a representation. I believe that's, that's what equity actually means.
Thank you. Zachariah Sharif?
When I, when I think of equity, I think same for all. When I say this, because like, of course, equity means like having same resources in every school. And I don't think that question even can be answered if there's the same resources just within, not outside the district, just looking at, within our own city school. I don't think there's the same resources in all the schools, meaning like, we're not being equitable to all the students in the schools. So to me, that's what equity means. Of course, also the representation, you know, that, that to me whole matters. And also equity, when I think about it, is about the finance part of equity. Like, like I would constantly talk about the budget, how, I mean, this district have came a long way along with the budget and are we going to do, what are we going to do moving forward to be equitable and reasonable and transparent and not find every year that we got to continue as citizens while our community is declining? So to me, when, when equity is not just, but also for creating and understanding the whole surrounding involvement.
Thank you, Zach. Aaron Lundberg?
Equity for me means the, the same op-
Equity for me means the, the same opportunity to all resources for every student, regardless of their circumstances, situation, or background. And that doesn't just start with resources and what we're provided from an educational standpoint. It also goes to the voices that we're having, uh, speak with them and in front of them and who are helping to teach or be in the classroom with them, but also the voice that we're giving the students. And I think that the, the student's voice is the most important here, all students, no matter what, uh, their circumstances are, or, uh, at the same time, uh, we want to be able to, um, I guess I want to have a, a board, and I don't understand if the board does this now, where how, what is our presence with those students? How are we working with the students? When do we hear the students? That voice that I'm talking about with their voice, and so that we're not just making decisions over here in left field that we think are the best for the students, but that we pull the right people in and good representation for students who have good voices, the right voices, a good mix of voices, who are empowered to help lead and make a difference at their school. The students should be helping us make decisions, and that's equity to me.
Thank you, Erin. Lauren Gillespie?
Thank you so much for the question. What accountability means to me, or equality means to me, is listening, representation, and accountability. We need to be held accountable as a school board for what our families and our students are saying, for what our staff is saying, for what they're going to need to best teach our students, to best help our families. Measurable outcomes, what we need in order to make measurable outcomes would be, um, an, a, an equity report. Having more communication for our own actions, having that accountability for us to see. Um, it's super important, and we really need to be focusing more on that.
Thank you. Daria Devlin?
Hi, Selena. Thank you for the question. Um, so maybe my answer is a little different from some of my colleagues here today, but to me, equity is not the same for everyone, but everyone getting what they need. We know that some students in our district need much more than others do. And so I think that real equity is making sure that in the places where we have students and families who need more, they get more. Um, and, and to me, you know, it means things like, if you don't have a PTO or a PTA at your school because your parents there are working three jobs and they really can't make it work, that something else steps in to take that place. And so when you think about, well, how do you measure that? I want to make sure that all students have access to high-quality math programs. So we shouldn't just have students at one school perhaps that have access to, you know, say Algebra I in the eighth grade or higher level math in, in eleventh and twelfth. Every student who has the ability should have access to those same, same programs. We shouldn't just have enrichment programs or high-quality enrichment programs at some of our schools. We need to make sure that where those resources don't exist, we bring them in so that every student has what they need to succeed. I think that's how we're successful. And certainly, we know that we need more diverse workforce in our schools. We know that we need to grow the number of teachers who, so that, you know, we have teachers in our buildings, administrators in our buildings who look like the students they serve. I think the district has done a good job. Superintendent Palito's budget already, I think, is moving toward that equitable model. As board members, we need to make sure that continues to happen and make sure that as a board, all the policies point in that way. But I do think there are ways we can measure it, but every student needs what they need. And if they need more, we need to give them more.
Thank you. Jay Brennerman?
All great, all great responses. For me, it means justice. And honestly, I don't think I can define, define it. I don't think we could, we've seen it. I don't think it's existed, uh, in our community at least. I think that it's something that we don't know what it's going to look like. Mainly, you know, we have so many structural problems that, that we need to, uh, mostly undo in order for us to get there. Um, I think that if we want to know, uh, how we're measuring, uh, equity in our schools, uh, we need to ask our children, we need to ask them, you know, there's some great tools like youth participatory action research. And, you know, you, a, a, all the, the children are the, are the expert, experts in their life experiences, so are their families. There's no reason why we can't just have, you know, get the, get the measurement and experience from them. Not just of who we selectively pick to come talk to us or various training, you know. Entire government systems and, and organizations have been talking about hiring fairs and, and, uh, you know, trainings and sensitivity training, all that stuff for 60 years. It's the exact same language. It hasn't changed at all for 60 years. We need to commit towards those structural changes, and we need to advocate as a board, as an institution, as a school, with all the families in the thousands that we represent in order to create that structural change, not within just in the schools. We gotta think outside of that too, because there are things that the county can be doing, there's things the city can be doing, and most definitely things that the state legislature should be doing in order to bring about, bring about that equity.
Thank you. And, uh, I, that, that concludes our round of questions. Again, this is a, i- it's very difficult to get a, a, a comprehensive sense of who each candidate is, but this is a great introduction tonight for the voters at home and the folks who will be watching later on YouTube. I want to encourage all of them to, uh, to, to Google each one of our candidates here, find them on social media, find their websites if they have them, and learn more about why they're running, uh, for the Erie City School Board in 2021. We're going to begin now our, our closing statements from candidates. And, and despite Jay Brennerman's objections, we're going to start back at the top of the alphabet.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Loop it back, right? So I, I really appreciate this chance, you know, with, with COVID, uh, and everything else. It's, it's been difficult, I think, for a lot of people to be engaged and to engage. And, and plus, you know, honestly, a lot of people experiencing, uh, digital burnout as it is right now. You know, I, I, I think that we all have our own motivations for running. And, and I don't doubt every single person has some kind of like visceral reason for that. And I think that, uh, the electorate voters would be wise to, to understand that and respect that. And I, I think that, um, and, and also that, you know, I, I understand that a lot, you know, this, this, this year, usually the year following the presidential race tends to have the lowest turnout. You know, what does the pandemic look like to do that? Which means that very, the very few people are going to be making some very big decisions about who's going to represent them, who's going to represent the thousands of students and, and teachers and, and staff and everybody else who relies on our school district. So I'm hoping that this is one more chance for people to learn about, uh, candidates, uh, for school directors, not, not just now, but also in the next cycle that's coming up, when there's going to be five position that's going to be open. Um, I, I think that we need to demand more as far as, you know, not just like having a beer or working with people from other branches of government or, you know, other levels of government. I think we need to, you know, it, you know, if I'm elected, I want you to hold my feet to the fire. I want you to hold me accountable. I want you to come and say, you know, what, what, what are you doing in order to not just, you know, shake hand, or hopefully we're not shaking hands anymore, but, you know, saying nice things and, and, uh, helping out and showing up and being there. But also tangibly, what, what's changing policy-wise? What, what's changing structurally that's going to change future lives? And, and how are you fighting for it? How are you putting your neck on the line? So, um, that's something that motivates me. I've committed entire life of service and I'll continue to do that. And I really, uh, look forward to, um, being able to do that tirelessly, working tirelessly for, uh, our, our, our children and our community. Because, you know, if, if, if we're not fighting, you know, tooth and nail for everything for this future, you know, what's the point? And, um, that's, that's why I, uh, hope to serve as, uh, your next school board director. Thank you.
Thank you. Daria Devlin?
Thanks so much. Um, I just appreciate all the comments and conversation here tonight. So, you know, for me, I feel like my whole life has been about these schools. I graduated from them. I insisted when I moved back to Erie with my husband that we live in the city, insisted that our kids go to these schools, spent time as a mom, as a PTO member, you know, talking about, learning about, and then had the time to be employed by the district and, and fought for our kids and our schools. And so for me, this is just a natural next step to take all that experience and knowledge and do it from the position where real change can be made. You know, in other cities like Pittsburgh, I see their social media campaigns that, that they say, um, vote school board first. They say that really your school board is the, one of the more important offices in the entire county. And so, you know, I think we have this moment right now in our city that people are ready for change. People are beginning to understand the things that need to change. We finally have some funding to make the changes with, and I think people are invested. I've already been out talking to some, you know, to some voters, and I'm hearing from them, you know, they're interested, even the ones whose kids have gone on and graduated. They're committed to our schools. We have this moment to keep some momentum, to keep things moving, to make our schools again, that point of excellence to the whole county. So I ask for your vote on May 18th. Um, I hope to serve in the future. As I said, my whole life has been about this, and, and I want to continue this fight for our kids and really for our city.
Thank you. Lauren Gillespie?
Thank you. I've been really passionate about helping my community for the past 10 years that I've lived near. My background in education and finances has led me down this path, um, as well as having my own children that are going to be, um, going to the Erie City Schools. I'm here to help families, students, teachers, and staff. I truly just want to help this community in a positive way, and being on a school board is a big step for that. I have seen some of the disparities that have gone on this past year, and it really motivated me to want to get more involved. And this is a big, big step for me and a big step for all families here in Erie. I think that through my conversations with community members, that a lot of people are ready for change. They're ready to hear what people in our community really have to say, not just, um, some elect few. I really hope to make positive change here in our city, and that's why I'm running for Erie City School Board.
Thank you. Erin Lundberg?
Over the last, uh, decade plus, as I've watched my children, uh, walk through the Erie School District, I've been incredibly blessed by the number of, uh, teachers who have such incredible passion, by a great mix and wide variety of students with great passions and loves. And, uh, it's just been a joy to be a part of. And so it's, it's been really good for me to be a part of, of various, uh, opportunities like cleanups and the PTOs and the superintendent's advisory panel. Uh, but most of all, I just, I feel that in that, and in my next level of what I can bring, it's, it's to bring my experience from a large organization with, uh, which has a mix of paid staff, volunteer staff, and a large number of volunteers, and specializes in empowerment. I want to be able to bring innovation. I want to reinforce and enhance standards of excellence through the strategic plan as that's been being, uh, brought out. And I want to elevate standards of our buildings and programs. And as I said, I have experience in the nonprofit world. That brings the navigation, if you will, of multiple opinions and thoughts, uh, and, and the need to communicate that well and work with those various opinions well. I bring that. And I believe that we are coming up on a continuation of, uh, great momentum time, uh, in our, in our community, where we're going to be able to start to focus on removing some of the communication barriers among various groups, tackling the silos and, and to see a world where the students, the teachers, the families, and the community all work well together with the administration to make the best decisions for the whole and not just potentially the loudest talkers. I believe it's going to take all of us, and I believe that we can do it together. So I also ask for your vote and, uh, want you to check us out at Together with Erin and join the Together team. We can do this.
Thank you. Zacharia Sharif?
Well, well, thank you for this opportunity. As I mentioned, I've been part of this community for the last 23 years. Uh, and, and I've, I've been through the old school system, and I'm definitely invested in our, in our city, investing in our children, education. Means, only means vibrant future for, for Erie, not now and, and going forward. Also, I, I understand how important it is to make sure that we're, we're utilizing what we've learned in this last, in this pandemic to, with, as far as technology goes, to involve the STEM programs, the artificial intelligence, to make sure every kid gets the, what they needed, the right resources at every school. And I want to support also our teachers because I know they've been impacted with, uh, they have to learn a whole new curve with virtual, uh, learning or whatnot. So, so definitely, uh, I, I'm 100% invested in Erie, uh, so, because I, one thing I would like to say is because is that it's our children, this is our community, and we have to protect the future of Erie. We cannot just allow things just to crumble down. And I think we have a lot of great candidates, and I will hope you will support me, uh, in the primaries, May 18th. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Depen Tomba?
Um, yes, um, I want to take this time to, um, thank, um, everyone for this, you know, amazing opportunity. And this is actually towards our youth. I want to encourage you all that, because as a, um, young African woman who actually have, you know, been through the system, um, I actually, I was in Africa, so like, and understanding how education is important. But when you're, when you're, um, female from Africa, you know, they don't value, um, female education. So, um, as scary as this is for me, and, you know, like I said, I'm not into politics. And this is like really nerve-wracking. I, I want to encourage every single youth in the community, in the Erie community, that no matter how scary stuff look for you, always, always, you know, try to fight to make a difference. Always, you know, um, if you believe that you can make a change, you can make a change, you know? Don't, don't let any negative thought hold you back or, you know, think, I'm too scared to do this. You can do it. If I can like, you know, come here and actually, um, put my fear aside to see change in the school, um, to see a better future for our student, because like I said, I did grow up through the system, and it was a struggle for me, you know, navigating through the system. But if I can, you know, um, get through this, I believe every single one of us can. And I would say, don't stop fighting, you know, no matter what it is, always keep fighting. You have your dr, you, you, you are in control of your dreams. No one else can like, you know, take that away from you or tell you, um, what you can and can't be. You know who you are and what you can be. So I appreciate everyone's support. And, um, when I'm elected, I don't want you to just elect me to be a school board, but I also want your support. I want to see you there when we have, when those meetings are actually going on. Don't just sit home like, you know, yeah, we elect her to like, you know, work for us. I, I want everyone to work together. It's, this is a teamwork, you know, not just me or, you know, the people that you're electing right now. It takes all of us to make this change. We can only, you know, do so much. So this is not only it. I want to see more. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah Traite, you get the last word here tonight.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Jim, for hosting and facilitating this. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in and listening to our stories and our perspectives. Um, I'd like to first just honor, um, Depen's story. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for being, um, transparent and vulnerable and, you know, trusting us with your story. Um, so thank you for being as open as you were. Um, I think that is, you know, really the crux of what we're all showing up here for. We all agree that public education is, uh, vital for our communities to thrive. It's vital for our young people to see the possibilities that exist. It's vital for our young peoples to, our young people to see that those barriers may not be as big as they seem. We all know that there's so many, so many disparities that exist here in our city for people to just create, you know, livelihoods for themselves and to make it, you know, uh, throughout their day. But there's also so much promise in the young people and promise in what this day means and, and what it can be for people. I think, you know, that the opportunity that we're seeing with the CARES Act funding, uh, Daria, I believe, alluded to it earlier of, it really could set us, um, as a school district on a path, um, towards fiscal salvageability that we, you know, could have only dreamed of, uh, several years ago. Um, and so I think it's really important that we have a school board who is, um, cognizant of that, who understands the history of it, uh, but who also is able to look at a more creative and more innovative solution that is going to address what this disparity is, but uplift the people who may not have seen themselves and may have not have seen how vibrant their futures can be. There's so many candidates on this call tonight and so many candidates that you've heard over the past few days, um, who see that vision. And I hope you see the vision that I've laid out, uh, for myself, uh, in what I'd like to see here. You can follow me on Facebook. I share a lot of information about what's, uh, what I, what I value most and what I'd love to see uh, in terms of direct change, uh, on Facebook. It's Dr. Leah Traite for Erie School Board. Um, you can also follow our slate, Erie Schools Can't Wait, um, and that slogan is really what this is about. Now is the time to act. Now is the time to address some systemic and historic, uh, and, and deeply seated issues that have been plaguing our community for a very long time. And I see the, um, the, uh, you know, huge benefit of, of that starting with, uh, a focused and concerted effort on public education here in Erie, leading us down a really incredible path. So, thank you all.
Thank you. And once again, I'd like to thank our candidates, Jay Brennerman, Daria Devlin, Lauren Gillespie, Erin Lundberg, Zacharia Sharif, Depen Tomba, and Leah Traite. Thank you so much, uh, for taking time out of your busy schedules to spend a, a, a little bit of time with us and, uh, and, and communicate with voters. I, I, I'll have to say, I, I am encouraged by, uh, the candidates that we have on this call tonight, uh, and the candidates we have running for school board, uh, which are, uh, are so important. uh, and the candidates we have running for school board, uh, which are, uh, are so important to our community uh, and often overlooked and undervalued. Uh, and so thank you all for, for putting yourselves out there. Uh, on behalf of our panelists, Selena King, TJ Sandell, Shannon Keane and Kristy Ganevas and the entire Erie County Democratic Party Committee, I'm Jim Wertz. Uh, thank you so much for joining us and, uh, don't forget, uh, to either apply for your mail ballot or vote on May 18th. Have a great evening.